...time, actually. Thank you, Lord, for what you do for us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First thing we're gonna do this morning, we have a number of employees that have put in a lot of time with Alamance County. So, the commissioners, we're gonna go down front, and as we call your name, if you've just come by, we'd love to shake your hand and thank you for your service. Okay? All right. Our first one is Vicki Ashworth with the Health Department for twenty years of service. Thank you. It's a pleasure. And that's Anna Carter. She's not here, so I guess we're gonna move right on to Kenny Cameron. Kenny's with the Tax Department, and she has twenty years of service. Congratulations. Robin from the Land Department. Robin's with the Health Department, and she's got twenty years of service. Robin, congratulations. Jackie Davis. That's you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. She is with... Congratulations. GSS. And Tracy Enix with MIS. They let you come out from out there. Twenty years of service. Thank you. Tam Hahn. The DSS. Congratulations. Lisa Loewy. Lisa's with the DSS also. David Payne. Sheriff's Department. Fifty years, you're up behind me. Charlie Kicker. C. Con. Charlie not here. Okay. Elizabeth Seora. Is that folks? She's with the Health Department. Thank you. Elizabeth here. Gail Tier. Gail is with the DSS. Glenn Tuff's not here, I don't guess, so we're gonna move right on to the Chairbrothers. Hey, Sarah. Thank you for your service, and you're with the DSS for twenty, twenty-five years. So, the rest of these are twenty-five years. John Chapman. EMS. Thank you for your service. Adrian Z. DSS. Andy Denham. Sheriff's Department. That's your long. I'm not lying. He's with the Sheriff's Department. Carl Wallace. Wendy O'Daniel. Wendy's with the Sheriff's Department. Thank you for your service. Your friend here. Sheila Ford, Phil. Sheila is with the Tax Department. And our friendly face now.
It's always a pleasure.
James Ridge. Thank you for your service. Charlie Stewart. Lisa Thomas. The Inspection Department. The lady that runs that place. Good job. That's Traxler. The DSS. William Jenkins, EMS. Thank you, sir. A lot of years of service. Thanks to all. All right. Next, we have public speakers. Thomas Farmoo. Thomas signed up, but Thomas didn't make it, so... That's the end of that. Commissioner, response to that, I guess. Okay. Before we begin, I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Was that the agenda?
Yeah.
Brian, were you gonna add something about...
Yes, I was gonna, actually, I was gonna talk about under County Manager Report and ask for action from the Board of County Manag-, uh, County Manager Report concerning cargo invasions.
All right. Consent agenda. Is there anything there that anyone would like to pull over?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
A second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor? All right. Next, on the Order of Business is Board Organization. And with this, I'm gonna turn it over to our County Manager, and we will proceed with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. It's required by North Carolina General Statute 153A-39 that every December, the Board elects a Chairperson and a Vice Chairperson at your organizational meeting, which is this meeting. So, at this time, I would open the floor for nominations for Chairperson.
I nominate Amy Gailey, Chairman. Do they require seconds?
Yes.
Okay. I'll second that.
So, we have a nomination for Commissioner Gailey for Chairperson and a second. Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Eddie Boswell.
Is there a second?
I can second it. I don't know.
You can.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two nominations and two seconds. Nomination for Chair, Commissioner Gailey for Chairperson and a nomination for Commissioner Boswell for Chairperson. So, at this time, I will close, hearing no other nominations, we'll, we'll close that nomination time. So, we have two nominations on the floor. All those in favor of Commissioner Gailey for Chairperson, I'd ask you to raise your hand so we can count. Let the vote show, we have three votes for Commissioner Gailey. All opposed? Okay. That, that solves the nominations for Chairperson. Ms. Gailey will be Chair.
Congratulations, baby. Turn it over to you. Turn it over to you.
This was smooth, there wasn't a ton.
Ms. Gailey, the process for Vice Chair will be yours.
Thank you. If I could just, um, if I could just take a minute to say a couple of things. Appreciation for being given this honor, this responsibility. First thing I would like to say is just to recognize the, the two ladies who paved the way before me to be a member of this Board. Ann Vaughn was the first person to be elected as a county commissioner, a lady, woman to be elected County Commissioner in Alamance County. And then she was followed by Linda Massey, and then Linda was the first Chairperson of this Board. And people might say, well, why are you recognizing them? They weren't Republicans. They're not from your party. But I think that's the kind of attitude that people in our country are really tired of. Those are great women, and they left high heels to fill. And I hope that, that I do them credit by continuing in their, in their service and their tradition. Also, I want to say that I appreciate and enjoy the gentlemen that I work with. That there's a lot in the news today about men who misbehave at work. You can't get away from it. It's everywhere. And I just wanted to say that publicly to say that I don't think that these gentlemen have treated me any better. They haven't treated me any worse than they would have any other person. And I think that is a credit to their mamas and the fact that they were raised right. And also, maybe a little tip of the hat to Linda and Ann because they got them broke in good for me. Appreciate that.
We knew better.
So, thank you for this honor, and I'm gonna try my best to do a good job. So, now, we're gonna elect a Vice Chair. And I guess we're gonna open the nominations to Vice Chair. And I would like to make the nomination of Bill Lashley to be Vice Chair of the Board.
I'll second him.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right. Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. And all in favor of Bill Lashley being Vice Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Awesome. So, thank you, Bill, for continuing in that service. All right. Next on our agenda is the review of the bonds of public officials. So, Mrs. Susan Evans, if you would, please help us with that.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you is the annual approval and review of the bonds for the public officials as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section 58-72-20. There are five bonds that need to be approved by the Board, and it does require a motion.
Are these minimum bonds or numeric, I mean, a dollar recommended by the State or what?
Yes.
They're recommended by the County Commissioner. You set the amount of the bond.
This is the amount that we've decided is adequate for Alamance County for the past several years. Any need to increase any of them, in your opinion?
Now, Sasa's not gonna run off, are you, Sasa?
I move approval of the bonds.
I'll second that.
Great. So, all in favor of approving the bonds, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Okay. Alamance Burlington School System Presentation on Performance Contracting.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Ms. Gailey and Mr. Lashley on your appointments. Look forward to working with you over the next, next year, anyway, as I do all of you. I really appreciate what y'all do each and every day. We're bringing before you, I've got Andy Knighten-Gale with me, from Performance Contracting, from Brady Train. Some of you have heard several presentations about performance contracting and how we can take money that you already provide us and do some major upgrades with, like, electrical or energy-consuming devices in our schools. But we're bringing them before you to get a better understanding. As a school system, we have vetted this. We've vetted contracts. We've looked at, this has been a year-long process. I've been with these guys. So, we're to the point of saying, either we need to do it or we're gonna have to think of a different way, which a different way would be not cost-effective. But I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Knighten-Gale and let him do his presentations. And I've got several folks in the audience, and we'll try to answer any questions that come up.
Thanks. So, I'm here today to answer any questions you have, any concerns you have about this project. I've got a slide deck here. I'm not gonna read bullet points off the slide deck. If you guys have any questions, as we're going through, stop me, ask questions. Happy to answer any of your questions. If I can't answer your question, we'll get you an answer before the end of the day. Next slide, please. So... So, the project goal is to convert the wasted energy and operational efficiencies through guaranteed energy savings. And what that means is, we're gonna come in, we're gonna find ways to reduce your energy costs so that you can use your existing operating budget to fund a project that will be financed over probably a ten-to-fifteen-year term. So, we take the money that you're already spending and pay into the power company, and we use that money to fund these improvements, capital improvements in your facilities. This project will address many of your facility needs. Later, in one of the later slides, I have some specifics about which schools and what we're doing in the different schools. Just one more thing about that. This is really early in the process. The next stage of this process is the investment grade audit. That's part of what the, you know, the approval we're looking for is to move into that next phase, the investment grade audit. So, we've looked at preliminary energy conservation recommendations. We've got a pretty good idea of what the savings are gonna be. But really, all of that's gonna be defined further. The scope, the cost, the savings will be defined further in this next phase of the project. And we're gonna work closely with Todd and his team. We're not, we're not coming in and saying, here's the scope that you need to do in your schools. We're working with Todd and his team to get their feedback on what really needs to be done in these schools.
Where are you, where's the starting point? As far as where you gonna, what you gonna start on? The light, lights, replacing lights or...
Yeah. I'll get to that in one of the next slides. But yeah, lighting would, lighting would probably be the first piece of it that would happen, and it would go the quickest in the process. One of the big benefits of energy performance contracting is it doesn't require additional appropriations. Like I said earlier, you're taking the money that you're paying to the utility companies, you're putting that towards paying for financing the project. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going through this, and you guys can see that the benefits of this, again, are you're using your existing funds. So, there's two, there's two pieces to this. There's the performance contract, which would be a, an agreement, a contract between Alamance and Train.
The county or the school system?
It would be with the county, correct?
No, it'd be with the, the agreement would be between the school system.
The financing requires county approval.
Yes. But are we partying to the agreement or just approving it?
It would be with the school system. Is that correct? And there's two pieces of it. There's the performance contract, which we would hold. And then the finance would be separate through a third party. And we would work with you to handle issuing the RFP and helping to get all that through. And these are the two, this is the two forms of legislation that allow this to happen. A typical project, one of these projects is usually a fifteen-year term. So, it's financed over fifteen years. Again, I, I don't need to go through this. It's just reiterating what I've already said. You're using your existing money and putting that to use towards capital improvements with your operating budget. We typically see between fifteen to thirty percent energy reduction. We've looked at all your utility bills, and a lot of your schools are already performing really well. So, the opportunity, we, we've tried to focus on the opportunities that we saw where the, the schools are a little bit of outliers from some of the rest. The schools that are operating well, we're just focusing on the very quick payback items like lighting and water improvements, and not gonna spend a lot of time and resources developing a real detailed, you know, doing a lot of engineering work that's gonna cost more money. So, to Todd and his team's credit, you guys are doing better than most school systems as far as energy consumption. Interest rates are really low right now. Another huge benefit to doing one of these projects right now. We've seen rates that are around three percent recently, even some that were a little less than that. So, it's really a good time as far as, you know, financing side for this type of a project. Utility rebates are also gonna be a part of this. And we haven't really, but have we, we haven't quantified what we think that's gonna be yet, or...
Estimated, yeah.
Do you remember what that number was? All right. It, it could be five hundred thousand. It could be a million dollars that the utility company puts towards this project because you're doing energy improvements to your facilities through their rebate program.
So, that eleven point seven million estimated project size is before the rebates?
It is. Absolutely. So, you wouldn't be financing that total amount. The rebate could come off of that, and you'd finance the difference.
And I had another question. You're estimating annual savings of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That's correct.
What, what's the estimated debt service for financing eleven point seven million dollars? Yeah. Inter, you know, principal and interest payments?
It would be, you know, somewhere around three percent over fifteen years. So... Do you have a calculator?
We can get that answered.
You know, eight hundred and fifty thousand times fifteen.
Well, you have...
I mean, that, it's...
It's more, yeah.
Right.
More complex than that.
It is. It is. That's just a rough, you know, close. Until we know what the finance rates are, we can't say for sure, but...
But we would anticipate, I guess the point is is that those payments would be less than the savings each year.
Exactly. Yes. It's gonna be, so, we guarantee the energy savings, and that's something that I haven't spoken on yet. We guarantee the energy savings. So, if we say that you're gonna save eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we probably think it's gonna be closer to nine hundred or somewhere around there. Because if there's a shortfall in what we're guaranteeing, we write you a check for the difference so that you're insured to make those finance payments, either through energy savings or through energy savings and a check that we write you.
I know that's true. I was the Energy Manager for a textile company, and I was responsible for doing all this. And it does pay back high dividends.
Yeah.
Surely does.
Yep.
It's the best way to go.
Well, that's another good point, is that we try to be conservative with our energy calculations because we don't wanna write checks. And we, we typically hit our guarantee. There's been a few times where we haven't, and we've written a check for it.
What kind of water conservation measures do you use?
So, we typically look at, on the older systems that are much higher, it, it's similar to what we would do on lighting. You know, the older systems that you have are gonna be a higher flush rate than a brand-new fixture would be. So, it would be changing out fixtures, putting in new flush valves that would do the same thing at a lower usage.
So, this includes the, the parts, like the fixture itself, as well as the labor to switch it out?
Everything that we do is gonna be turnkey, from doing the engineering to the construction to the verification afterwards. Everything is turnkey. We're not gonna give you a product, and you've gotta go and have somebody install it. Oh, sorry. I should've had that up.
I was wondering where that was.
You were already there. So, yeah, we're estimating somewhere around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in annual energy savings. And then that should fund around eleven point seven million dollars in project. This I already talked about. It's two separate contracts. The performance contract would be between Alamance Schools and Train, and then there would be a separate finance agreement. So, this is what we would be looking at going as far as scope of work. And, and again, this is early in the process. We'd work closely with Todd and his team, and it could change from, from what we have up here now. But in general, this is what we're looking at. Lighting in probably every building. Lighting usually has a really quick payback. And there's also good incentives, rebates from the utility company on lighting. Automatic, automated controls. It provides, it, it does several things for you. In addition to energy conservation, it provides a lot more visibility for the maintenance staff. They can much more quickly identify where there's temperature issues and get those addressed quicker as well. So, it provides a lot more visibility for Todd and, Todd and his team. I'm going on time. Equipment replacement. We're looking at several schools. That's primarily HVAC equipment. It, it isn't, I don't think it's HVAC for the entire school, but it's where we saw that there was aging equipment that'll need to be replaced in the near future. Those are the schools that we identified. And I believe we, Todd, you and your team gave us, where, gave us a list of where there were issues and concerns.
We provided Brady Train with a list of, we're talking about controls. Where are our older controls? Where do we have, I believe, control of our buildings? We provided a list of equipment replacement. What we see in the very near future as far as chillers or boilers either going out or becoming so cost ineffective. Now, this time, this way shows out. So, we've used what we know to provide this initial list. As they go through this initial grade audit, they may identify other items. And they may tell us that some of the items that we have chosen are not ready to be traded out or changed out. It may be a different avenue. So, this is a collaborative process. It's been a collaborative process for about a year now. The biggest benefit we see of the whole program is, one, we're using the money you're already giving us, making an investment in our schools, improving the performance of our buildings. And we're gonna continue with that savings until this is paid for. And then they will continue their own, which, you know, in line will save the district money. Now, we have no control of rates, and that's where we'll start on my final resolution after we get this investment grade audit. Because, you know, due power goes up twenty percent. We can continue to show this kind of savings, but that's what the resolution will take place of. I know the question about the, how much savings, how much the loan is. The loan will not over the savings. So, if that, if we show that we can save eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and it'll pay for a twelve million dollar project, we'll do a twelve million dollar project. If that's what we need. If we only need nine million, we'll do nine million. But if it only shows that we can only pay for a nine million dollar project, we'll scale the project back down and take the highest priority, such as lighting. I'll know lighting is very expensive, not only to teach well, lighting, not only to maintain, but also to get rid of the bulbs, the ballast. I mean, all that is extremely expensive now. So, there's a cost even when they burn out. So, you know, if it will save us enough money, we're gonna do all we can do. Because we wanna make this a one-shot deal to, you know, improve the performance of our schools. If you've been in any of our buildings, such as, I'll pick on Williams bottom floor. We put LED lighting in there. It went from a dungeon to a very bright place.
You might oughta explain what a ballast is. A lot of people don't know.
Well, it's true. It's true. A ballast, each, your old fluorescent lighting, I don't have a ballast in it. The ballast is what controls the power going out to the tubes that causes the fluorescent tubes to light up. Well, some of your old ballasts have mercury in them. Some of them have lead in them. So, it has to be specially, we have to use a special company to do away with it. We can't just toss them in a trash can like we did years ago. For fluorescent tubes, you no longer just toss them in a trash can. You have to properly dispose of them. The average year of lighting is ten to twelve years on LEDs. So, that bulb, you know, if you go ten or twelve years without having to get rid of any ballast or bulbs, there's another little savings that's coming back on the other side of that. So, you know, our goal is to make those changes as quick as we can. And, you know, we can come to you and say, we need a million, and we can do this little project, and we can do this little project. By the time we get to the last project, we gotta go back to the first project. Like this, we can do all the projects at one time. It is turnkey, as Brad provided for us here. It's Brad and Andy's provided for us. It's turnkey. It will not cause us any additional work other than us overseeing. Now, I know they've talked a lot about, I'm sorry, Brad.
Andy.
Andy, excuse me, gosh. I'll get you right in a second. Sorry, Andy. I know we've talked about this guaranteed savings. We also have an engineer, Locklear Locklear Associates, out of Pembroke. I know we've talked about this guaranteed savings. We also have an engineer, Locklear, Locklear Associates, out of Pimlico that is our engineer. He not only will help us oversee the project in the sense of money, is it valuable? Is it purposeful to do? He also has to redo the calculations every year to verify that Brady's calculations are correct. So that's a safeguard that the school system puts in place to verify that what Brady says is correct at the end of the day.
Todd, having attended to most of your meetings and hearing this presentation, I believe that's a statutory requirement to have that engineering firm oversee it?
Yes, it is.
An external engineer?
Yes, it is.
And that's just a safeguard that's put into this legislation?
Your safeguard that what you're hearing is correct and I.
Yeah, the new commodes have less water usage, which will save money. The big commodes probably triple the amount of usage on water.
Yep.
At a lot of our homes.
Yep.
Right, that's, that's a savings. You have some small savings in the picture, but it is a savings. And where we can find that savings is we can actually invest in something additional that would benefit our schools and our facilities.
Thanks, Todd. Yep. So, you know, again, with this being a preliminary stage, there are a lot of additional things that we'll be looking at during the next step in the process. This is just a list of some of those things that we'll also be looking at in the next phase. So these are the next steps in the process, advertising of the Energy Service Company Award, which is Brady Train.
Is that, has that already been determined? Because at one point you were engaged to do a certain part of the project and it was still going to be open for other firms to be able to be the final awardee?
So, you want to address that?
Okay, we, we put RFQ out. We had six companies to show up for the initial meeting. We had one company to respond, which was Brady. So statutory requirement says we put it back out again. We had, we had to have at least two companies show up on repeat. We had two companies show up. Again, Brady Train was the only one who has submitted. So we have gone to the point now that the contract, the ESCO contract is sitting on our board agenda and consent at this moment. Our attorneys have looked at it and they've done their due diligence to make sure what everybody says is what everybody says. So if everything goes smoothly today, that award will be announced as of in the morning.
I didn't mean to challenge Brady because it's a very reputable company. I was just asking for.
Well, you had the process, I'm sorry, we switched up the process out on the front side.
Yep. Um, I don't need to read through all of this. This is just some of the next steps, you know. We would, again, go into the investment grade audit after this. It's probably somewhere around a six-month process to get through that. That's doing all the energy calculations, putting together scope of work, getting pricing pulled together. And then from the investment grade audit, we would move into the energy services agreement, which is the contract, the performance contract. And then we actually start implementing the work. And to your question earlier, the, the way that it typically goes is the lighting and water gets done first because they go the quickest. They'll be in and out in, you know, a few months, four or five months. The rest of the project may be a year-long construction period. Controls and the equipment replacement are typically about the same amount of time. They take usually the entire schedule of the construction phase of the project.
Do you use subcontractors? Do you bid out some of this work to actually?
We do, we do, and we try to use as much local subcontractors as we can as, as long as their experience and background fits the scope of work that we're trying to implement. If you all and Todd have recommendations on subs that you've used before, based on the work that we're doing, we're happy to use any local subs that you recommend.
So I guess one of my concerns was the, um, the, the cost that's being paid for these improvements. Other than what you've already done in bidding to manage this work, there's still, we're not going to overpay because it's going to be done on a bid.
We're bidding everything out and the state requires through this process, open book pricing. All of that was submitted as part of our response and it shows in there. Here's what our soft costs are. Here's what our markup is. Here's what our profit is. It's a totally open book pricing and we bid it out to everyone.
Thank you.
Great. Are we doing a vote on this today? Were we voting to approve this? But it sounded like the school board has a little more.
I think what, what we're looking for is a consensus for us to move forward. Is we'll have to make an investment tonight that will be part of the contract. But if we move forward, make that investment, and then we don't move forward, then we swallow that investment we're making tonight. So simply a consensus for us to move forward.
So, so that's a really good.
Question before we do anything else. I see on the, on your website that you, one of your big projects were school system, Ory County, and I assume that's Myrtle Beach?
Ford County is, is Myrtle Beach.
Ory.
So you must be from there if you said Ory, because that's how they say it.
Well, the H is silent. It's a French word and accent's on the re. I have to always point that out.
Most people don't say it that way, but Ory.
They even have it in a fight song in one of the high schools down there. Nobody knows how to pronounce our name, but we do.
Yeah.
Uh, but you list that as a big, one of your biggest projects. Can you give us some stories of what you've done there?
Yeah, so that's a little unique. It's not an energy performance contract like this one. That project is, that we were working on is with a partnership with a developer that builds energy positive school systems. So they're building, these, this is five new school systems that they are putting solar panels on and the schools are going to produce more energy than they consume. So our role in that, we were involved in the design process and selecting the mechanical controls, integration system. We were a really big part of the design. Because we have the energy background, the partner that we have on this project really leaned heavily on us to help them decide what they needed to do to make it an energy positive school. Because you can't just go in and add solar panels to the building. If, if you just design the building the way you typically do and it's not really efficient, it's going to require a lot more solar panels to make it energy positive. So we made the building very, very energy positive, I mean, I mean, very efficient so that we could reduce the solar panels that we're putting on there. Three of the schools are open now and two of them should be wrapping up January or February, I believe.
Have you done any work in the, I think your office, you have one in Greensboro, right?
We do.
Yeah, and Wilmington, I believe, and Charlotte?
Uh, we don't have a Charlotte office.
Or Durham, Durham, excuse me.
Uh, yeah, it's just outside of Durham.
Yeah, have you done any work for, on the energy issue with any other public school systems in the state?
Yes.
Who, who are they?
Yes, uh, we've done a project just like this with Hope County Schools.
Hope?
Hope.
Yeah, that's where they had the energy savings panels there.
Yeah, Hope also built one of those energy positive schools as well. We weren't a part of the, it's Sandy Grove Middle School in Hope County. We weren't a part of that project. We got involved with the developer after he had built that one. But they've also done one of those schools as well. Durham Public Schools, we've done a project with, um, who else, Brad?
Several community colleges.
It's part of school system.
Yeah, I'm trying to run down the list.
We, we can provide you with a list of all the school systems.
We're satisfied with their track records with public schools.
We, we've had, we've taught references, we've taught to contractors. We've spoken with architects, engineers, you name it. Even the engineer that we've got now has been involved with a project with Brady. So yes, we have vetted them very well and are satisfied with their performance. What they say they can do, they will be able to do.
So I, I like this concept because I remember learning in graduate school, when you're considering a capital project like this, you have to think of it in two mutually exclusive phases. One is, is the investment, regardless of what the cost is, is the investment worth it from a return on the investment? And so if we're going to invest eleven point seven million dollars, are we going to have enough of a return on that to make it worthwhile to spend the eleven point seven? And then the second part is what's the best way to finance it? And they're really two independent decisions. And so our choices in financing something like this, I mean, we could include it in the bond issue or we could do this. If you did it in the bond issue, that means there's another, well, first of all, a bond would have the pass, but that could be a little risky. And also there's, there would be a delay and the delay, any delay, we're just spending out more money. So, I mean, there's a cost.
It's costing them every day. Every day that we don't do something, it's, it's costing the schools.
So I really, this is a nice way to do it without ha- having to do a property tax increase to pay for it and.
Your expense.
That's going to pay for itself.
Yeah.
Right.
And three percent is a good rate. Now, three, maybe a, Susan, I don't know what bonds are going for these days, but the bonds might be a little less, but, but again, there's a cost awaiting and there's upfront costs in issuing bonds too.
Exactly.
So, um, so I think I'm really in favor of this.
Yeah, and if you decide not to do the project, you're still going to continue to pay that eight hundred and fifty thousand that we're trying to save.
That's a given anyhow.
So, yeah.
Does the school system have central thermostats?
Central as in we, we have controls in the central office or in our maintenance shop where we can control temperatures in the buildings. Some of the ones up here that are listed are pneumatic controls, which pneumatic controls are very expensive to maintain for one thing. But also the, to create any type of consistency throughout the building is very difficult. So that's really the main controls that we're looking at, is we do have controls. Most of our, the biggest majority of our HVAC is controlled through our central office.
And I don't believe that the, the cost of doing it under this financing arrangement would be any different than if we did it through a bond issue, for example. Other than maybe the, that the external engineer, the cost of the external engineer wouldn't be required if you're going to do it.
Probably be required, but I feel like, you know, we probably won't.
But, yeah, because.
For safety anyway and our security.
Well, there's probably some savings that he, he could uncover anyways. That to pay for himself, so.
Does anybody have any more questions or comments?
I'm good with it.
I think that we have a consensus that this is a fantastic thing and we look forward to being able to proceed on it when the time is right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Appreciate so many school board members being here too.
Yes, we do.
And, and school system staff?
Yes, a lot. All right, um, the next item on our agenda is the Alaman's Burlington School System presentation on the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget. Dr. Harrison?
Good morning again. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Dennis and our finance officer in just a minute. But over the past year or ever since Brian has become the county manager, he, Susan, Shannon, Dennis and I have met on a regular basis to talk about our, our budget, where our money's going, what our needs might be. And we thought it would be a, a good idea to share with the commissioners all the revenue from where it comes and where it goes, how we mix and match, if you will, federal, local and, and state dollars. We start off every presentation that we do with our vision and you'll see on one of the slides our six strategic goals. We are very intentional about doing that. I think, you know, everybody says your, what you value is where your money goes and you take a look at someone's checkbook and you'll know what's important to them and we're going to do today is show you our checkbook.
Dr. Harrison, can I interrupt, please?
You just said it, but go ahead.
Since I was on this vision plan committee, one of about fifty, I think it's worthwhile to, to read what this community came up with and how we envision our public school system because.
Why don't you read it since you were a part of the, part of the team that put that together, if appropriate?
And I, I just think that this, this, it's so important that we know where we want to go with our public education system. And this says it, there's a lot of work went into this. We envision a public school system that is a national model for its curriculum and community engagement to empower all Alaman's County students with an equal opportunity for, and these are the really important things here. Equal opportunity, that means for everybody, regardless of zip code or census tract or neighborhood, equal opportunity for civic engagement, a meaningful quality of life and skills for economic success for themselves and for our community. So, I mean, if our kids are successful, then the whole community is successful economically. So that's the bottom.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Commissioners, I have, thank you for having us here. I have several slides that I'm going to go through, kind of the details of the budget, what we're doing, how we're spending their money, and a little bit more details than, than what the slides have. If you guys have any questions, feel free to speak up and I can stop. It may be later in the presentation, but feel free to speak up. Uh, this is a breakdown of the revenue that we receive by the source of funding. As you can see, the majority of our revenue does come from the state. The next largest portion of funds that we receive is from you guys and local sources, which is primarily you all and your county appropriation to us. From there, child nutrition, uh, the federal funds are next, shortly followed by child nutrition, as well as several smaller funds like our grant, capital outlay and daycare funds.
So explain the capital outlay because when I hear the term revenue and then I hear outlay, those are two going in opposite directions, so.
So capital outlay is going to, is kind of the token term for finance and how our funds laid out. Uh, but that's going to be for all capital needs. So the million dollars that you allocated to our capital fund this year is in there as well as some lottery funds and some bond interest allocations that we have remaining in our capital fund. So it's going to be for any building, capital, maintain, um, large maintenance type of projects.
So some of that is in addition to the local?
Correct, yes. So the million dollars of capital is what's going to be in there. And then the local, we typically use local, it's going to be more maintenance type of items. Something considered like custodials or small supply, uh, small type of things that need repaired. If it's a large repair item or a large piece of equipment or something of that nature, it would be more capital outlay. So in some, there are some items that could kind of overlap between local and capital.
Thank you.
Uh, next I have our strategic plan. As Dr. Harrison mentioned, we are very intentional when it comes to our vision and strategic plan. We do review the strategic plan every year before we come up with our budget. And then throughout the year, as we are spending money to determine, does it tie back to our strategic plan? If it does tie that back to our strategic plan, in what way is it benefiting students? Um, in the most valuable way we're able to with the funds that we have. Now I'm going to get into each fund and with each fund, that's going to be the state, the primary funds for operating. I'm going to go through state, local, federal and grant funds and how each of those funds are spent. Our state funds, seventy percent is spent on salaries with twenty-six percent on bonus, on benefits. So that makes up ninety percent of, ninety-six percent of our, of our state budget is spent on people. That is the majority, as, as we looked at in the previous slide, the majority of the funds we received are state funds and the majority of those funds are spent on our employees. You will notice that the largest chunk of all of the funds, the employees are primarily paid out of state funds. And there's a reason that we primarily pay for employees out of state funds as opposed to local funds or one of the other funds. When a staff member is paid out of state funds, the state's going to cover things. If there's a bonus for that year, the state's going to cover that bonus. Um, above and beyond the regular just dollars that they give us, they have kind of these other categories where if that person is paid through state funds, they're going to cover, they may cover that bonus. They cover longevity payments. They cover if there's an annual leave payout when somebody might retire or resign, uh, as well as workers' compensation. So there's some kind, those kind of fringe benefits that the state covers if that, if an employee is paid out of state funds. Where if the employee were paid out of local funds, we would be required to cover it with local funds. And so it is beneficial and cost efficient for us to pay as many people out of state funds as possible. Uh, when it's something like supplies, there's no supplemental cost of having to buy supplies. If, you know, a book is a hundred dollars, a book is a hundred dollars. There's no extra expense that might come along with it like there would be in salaries. So our per people allocation for state as the time that this was done is five thousand nine forty-five. Our state funds, we receive projections and we receive the majority of our state funds in the beginning of the year, but there are still large chunks. Um, our state funds, we receive projections and we receive the majority of our state funds in the beginning of the year, but there are still large chunks of state funds that we have not received and we don't know what they're going to be. Um, one example of that is going to be our transportation funds. We receive an eighty percent allocation to begin with and then, uh, typically in December, we're gonna receive the remaining, we're gonna know what that remaining allocation is. Uh, so our state funds really, we receive revisions and we probably receive somewhere around forty revisions throughout a year. And our last revision is received typically around the last week of June. So those funds, just like some of the other funds, we never know to the penny until the year is closed out of exactly what those funds, uh, will look like. But this is, I pulled it as of October and so that's kind of where, uh, these numbers and our projections, some of the money we're able to project, some of it we're not. EC is another example of state funds that are still coming, uh, that we aren't aware of.
I have a question about this slide, where you have capital outlay, it's, uh, fifty-nine thousand six hundred and one. Um, so the state funds that you're addressing on this slide, that's some separate from the lottery money, 'cause the lottery is money that comes from the state.
Yes.
And it's spent on capital stuff, but it's not included in this slide because from your budgeting perspective, it's not the same thing, is that right?
Correct, from a budgeting standpoint, it goes in the big capital outlay. The capital that is listed on here, that's a great point, is going to be expenses over five thousand dollars. So there could be a piece of equipment, say, that our exceptional children's department needs, that is over five thousand dollars, but it's able to be paid with out of state funds. The career and technical education department could be another department where they're buying a larger item, piece of equipment that they're able to use state funds for, but it's still considered a capital purchase. So there is a little bit of crossover there as well. The majority of our capital purchases would not be allowed out of state funds, but there are a couple of departments that, that can spend state funds.
It's a complex finance.
It is.
Very complex.
Next, from our local funds, um, first I wanted to point out that the county appropriation, you'll see, is a little bit different from the total. Uh, the county appropriation is forty million six eighty-one nine oh seven and then we have budgeted nine hundred thousand in fines and forfeitures. Again, the majority of our local funds are being sent, spent on salaries and benefits, uh, followed up by services and then supplies. The per people allocation out of local funds is one thousand eight hundred and fifty.
Could, could you give examples of services?
Yes, so some of the services that we spend out of local funds, a large one is going to be our custodial contract. And I have a slide that goes more into detail on somewhat, some of our services are, um, services could be out of local funds, we do, some specialized programs have services related to them. Our SROs are paid out of local funds, we have custodians, we have legal fees and there are also some EC contracts. Uh, a lot, most of the time, we typically try to hire EC employees, however, in some areas with the exceptional children such as speech, um, nursing, there are times where there aren't enough and we end up having to contract. And that would be, that would fall under a service. So some of those services are kind of interchangeable with staff if we're able to hire the staff.
Can you give me a ballpark on how much you spend on legal services?
Don't have that number, but I can get it to you.
Are we paying for this, the entire school system's legal services or just some of it?
Entire.
Entire.
I can get to legal services.
That would be great, thank you, I would like that.
How about services, I'd like you to explain this, uh, not services, but, uh, supplies. I hear all the time that teachers don't have to, uh, supplies that they need. Would you explain what that means in that, if we were given four million dollars, I wanna know what, where it goes?
Absolutely, so supplies, what we do at the beginning of the year is there's an allocation that each of the schools get, uh, a per people allocation of seventy dollars per student that's projected to be at their school. So that projection, we calculate in typically May, June to be, and it's the same projection that we use to allocate teachers for the following year. And we give them seventy dollars per student, which is a combination of state and local money is where, uh, the combination of that comes from. However, it hits the local budget because again, it's more beneficial for us to pay for salaries out of state. But the origination was kind of state and local.
Is that for paper and pencils?
That's gonna be for paper and pencils, we direct the schools, their first item to be able to purchase should be consumer.
Let me ask you something, why does teachers have to, have to spend their own money to buy those supplies if the school's supposed to supply them? All I, the biggest complaints I hear is teachers spending money out of their own pocket because they can't get supplies. Something is not right in this, uh, in this system.
I think...
We got that problem. If we're supplying seventy, seventy dollars per student every year, somebody's not doing what they're supposed to do.
We've actually raised that to seventy dollars the last two, two years ago and I think some of that is, uh, we have a school improvement team at each school, uh, and they're responsible for the budget. And they're supposed to develop that local school budget openly, they're supposed to vote on that local budget. And I think some of that has to do with teachers always want a little bit more out of their, out of goodness of their hearts.
They wanna do more bullet scores.
Well, I think, yeah, well, I've been in, in Chapel Hill, who probably spends more per people than anywhere else. I promise you, they've got teachers spending money out of their own pockets.
Yeah.
The board has been very, uh, aware of that and has advocated, uh, the last two years that we, that we do increase that.
I just hear so much talk from teachers about what they spend and I just wanted to clarify what, what that covers. Like...
We went down to sell it one time and they had a little separate room, I don't know if it's still down there or not, and they took me inside and they had stacks of crate paper, uh, poster boards, you know, just had a whole room full of stuff, you know, that, I think, I don't, I don't know where they got the money, was it PTA or, or PTO, whatever? But I don't even, is that still down, still in, that room, if I know?
Oh, I don't know.
Maybe go back down and look, but...
That scan was real active in that at one time, what wasn't you in, in the supplies?
Are you referring to Alamance Citizens for Education's classroom closet?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Um, there's a national statistic that's, teachers spend about seven hundred and fifty dollars of their own money out of pocket to support their classrooms. A lot of that again reflects back onto what the state provides and the locals provide. And the classroom closet was designed to support teachers so they can go in and get those additional supplies without putting money out of their pocket and it is still in operation. We hope that's a perk to our teachers, thanks for asking.
No, I would just like to point out that, you know, we have this vision of a national model of an education system and to get there, you develop six strategies and one of those is classroom and school supports. And, and that just begs the question, is seventy dollars enough for a student? I mean, that, that seventy dollars doesn't go very far over the course of a whole year. And, and so I just ask, is that really enough to help accomplish, carry out that particular strategy to accomplish that vision of a national model of an education system?
Bill, if I may, I, I just would like to add that we hear the same complaints. And it's not only teachers, but I would add that parents also contribute quite heavily, um, at the beginning of each school year and throughout the year. Teachers often have trees with leaves and everybody takes one and buys this or that and, um, so we're, not only are we providing that seventy dollars, but teachers and parents are providing supplies monies throughout the year.
Yeah.
I would say that as a parent with children still in ADSS, I don't have anybody in elementary school anymore, now mine are both in high school. I have one at Western High School, he's a senior and one who's a freshman at Williams. And, um, but when they were in elementary school, we used to go to Walmart and load up the cart with all the glue sticks and the colored pencils and the hunt for the right notebook that the teacher wanted us to get and, um, and all of that. And then, um, often the children was, I'd ask them six weeks later, what's going on at school, are you using all that stuff? No, we're not using it. Or, or I'd talk to the teacher and they'd say, well, we put it on the list because we made it out as a team, but then we didn't end up using it. And I think that that is an area that, um, is, uh, open for being addressed by the boots-on-the-ground administration, um, looking at that because it is a burden. I mean, you spend, you do, for a, a child in elementary school, you get handed the big school list and it's easy fifty dollars, if not a hundred or more per child. And my heart does go out to those children who live in, um, in homes that just don't have the money and there are plenty of those in our county, too. And also, uh, I asked about, uh, Alamance Citizens for Education Classroom Closet and I asked, well, how come people are using that more? I asked some teachers who had contacted me with, to express their concerns about different things and I was told that it was not convenient for them to be able to go. A lot of teachers have younger children and it's, it's hard to get your little ones in and out of the car, you gotta deal with the stroller and the car seat and everything. And so, um, although I think that, uh, ACE is a good idea and, uh, is a, is an avenue that some people take advantage of, so there may be barriers to teachers being able to use that resource that, um, maybe could be made more fruitful to those that you're trying to reach.
Yeah, I would encourage you to have that conversation with Stephanie, the executive director, and I'll also tell you that they do offer what's called the Apple Cart Delivery Service, so teachers can actually order online and then they will deliver it to the school. So they are aware of those barriers and they're really trying to work towards a more convenient, um, opportunity for those teachers.
Well, that would be, yeah, the Apple Cart's a really good idea and there were teachers who didn't know about it.
Yeah.
You know?
And they're working on that marketing, I've been coaching her on that.
Okay, well, great, all right, what else? All right.
Federal funds is the next area that, to look at. Again, the majority of our federal funds are spent on people. Uh, the largest, um, category of federal funds that we receive are Title I funds. These funds go specifically to schools with a high percentage of free and reduced lunch. To be able to enhance the programs at their schools to specifically meet the needs of the students at those schools. And the next highest is going to be Title II, which is, gets into professional development and mentoring for teachers. And so a lot of the federal funds are tied up, EC is also another large, um, category of federal funds that we receive for exceptional children and career and technical education. Uh, so there are several categories of federal funds that are specifically driven to what the federal government has reserved the funding for. And our per, per people allocation for federal funds is six hundred and forty-eight dollars. Our grant funds, again, the largest percentage is in salaries and wages and benefits. Um, grant funds can be anywhere from grants from local agencies to our largest, uh, grant funds that go into this category are going to be from Medicaid. All of our Medicaid reimbursements that, for the services that we provide, that Medicaid reimburses fall under these funds. It can be school, school and department grants, it can be local grants, it can be any sort of grant that we are able to receive for, um, additional revenue. Also in the, falling into this category would be things like when somebody rents out one of our facilities or when we're able, when we, the little bits of money that we end up generating, which are very small bits of money, but that would fall under this fund. This is also the big infamous Fund Eight, um, as for anything that would fall under here. Our per, per, per people allocation for this is three hundred and thirty dollars. Again, it is driven very specifically based upon, uh, the grant awards that we receive. Now, we're gonna, I'm gonna take each of the categories that we just discussed and go into detail and, uh, kind of break apart what is being spent in each of the categories as an all funds. This is going to be the funds that we just reviewed, which are state, local, um, federal and grant funds. So, a- at all funds and then specifically drilling into the local funds because that's primarily where you guys fund. Uh, for all salaries and benefits, I listed a percentage, these percentages will, that are listed are gonna add up to a hundred percent. So this is the percentage of salaries and benefits that are spent in each of these categories. Our largest percentage by far is in teachers and teacher salaries. And then still the next several percentages get into certified instructional support and non-certified instructional support. Um, so the, the largest pot of money, as it should be, is spent in the classroom and working directly with students. As you can see along the bottom, a large percentage of our salaries and benefits is tied up in retirement and hospitalization. With the retirement and hospitalization, we don't have a choice if we wanna participate in the state retirement plan or the state health insurance, um, we are required to participate in it. So those costs are kind of fixed based upon where, wherever the state, uh, sets their rates. Are there any questions on the generic?
I have just one quick or two.
Uh-huh.
Two maybe, um, extra duty pay, would that be the coaches? I know the coaches aren't paid much, they get a little bit, do they get money through the budget?
It is, it's gonna be partially extra duty pay, it's also gonna be additional responsibility stipends. Um, that would be, we have a very few occasions where we end up having a teacher teaching an extra section of something. Um, it also goes to pay for mentors for teachers and principals and pays for tutors. So, so, um, along with that, the other supplementary pay is the other kind of one that's not detailed. That's gonna be longevity, annual leave, um, bonuses and any differentials, uh, that the state might go.
Before we leave this page, I wanna take the opportunity to heap praise and respect for the people answer the phone at schools. The receptionist, the one who has to buzz people in through the doors, things like that. I've been there when, waiting for a child to come for a dentist appointment or something and heard, you know, the phone call, their end of it and how it's going and those people have a hard job answering the phone.
It is, it is a very busy job and they all, so again, have other duties that end up, that they work on as well. Um, specifically drilling into looking at local, uh, the largest percentage that, of local salaries and benefits does go to local supplements. Again, we try to get employees' main salaries to go on state funds. Um, so the largest percentage here is our local supplement as well as the support services, um, and then specifically funding additional teachers that we aren't able to, we only have so many funds on the state to be able to get all of the teachers on. Um, and again, we still have additional teachers, uh, that we do support out of local.
So could you give, are there specific examples of types of teachers or is it kind of across the board?
No, basically what I do, uh, what I do when I'm looking at the teachers, I put the highest paid, longest years on the state because there's eligible for longevity, we might be able to pay them out of a position allotment. So really, it's gonna be the newer teachers that might be paid on the local funds to be able to, um, save some money. The other thing, um, I wanted to point out that, uh, was a question of county staff, is the difference between the local supplement, um, out of the local fund and the local supplement on all salaries and benefits? There's a little bit of a difference there and so I wanted to point out that difference is because we pay, first of all, any, anybody who's paid out of a federal fund, their supplement also has to come from a federal fund. Uh, and then, in order to generate funding to, for EC, for the exceptional children's department, to be able to do more and have more resources, we kind of move around their local supplement. We still end up, we kind of trade them for their highest paid positions and they pay some of their local supplements out of their Medicaid reimbursement. Um, in the end, all of the funding that comes from the local supplements gets paid out, but in order to pay for their highest paid staff out of a position allotment, we're able to, to generate a little bit of extra revenue for them there. Um, so again, the local funding that is given for local supplements does all get to the local teachers.
So it, would it be safe to say that, um, you're doing some pretty good, um, steering or maneuvering to help leverage, get the most use out of the federal and state funds before coming to the local funds?
I spend a lot of time trying to generate whatever funding that we can to be able to. Um, like I said, those position allotments are very valuable to us, so, you know, as, there are also talks in Raleigh of trying to do away with those position allotments. Those do allow us a lot of flexibility in, in being able to, um, work with our funding to make sure that we are able to do the most. work with our funding to make sure that we are able to do the most even, and have, we want to be able to do the most and have some of the highest paid staff, um, in terms of years of experience. Services, these are the ser, this is the service breakdown for all funds. Primarily goes into contracted services. This is kind of what I had mentioned before, the SROs, specialized programs, custodians. Uh, there are also some ever life services that fall under this. Utilities being a large one that is also considered a service. Some transportation, um, professional development. And the other fund here, the primary, primary item is going to be an indirect cost. When we have federal programs, we're able to, um, charge to the program a small percentage of what it costs to be able to operate that federal grant. Uh, for example, you know, if we're hiring employees, the HR department is working towards that grant. Our, their paychecks are working towards that grant. So we're able to charge a small percentage towards indirect costs. And then there's some unbudgeted federal funds, uh, that we have to leave in there for carryover into the following year because, uh, the federal budget year is different than our budget year. So we have to make sure that we have funds in order to carry forward into the following budget year when the federal government passes their budget, um, to be able to continue paying the salaries out of that. So there always has to be a little bit of unbudgeted funds for that reason.
Since you have, uh, transportation and the custodians on the same slide, uh, I wanted to ask a question about how the pilot program is going in the Western Zone? If you know or if Dr. Harrison can say. I know that the, the, the transport, that having the bus drivers in the Western Zone was a big problem last year and y'all were working on that, that pilot program. How is it going?
It's actually going very well. Uh, we were very fortunate, a few of our custodians that we were able to hire had bus license. So we was able to get them in the roles of driving buses and being sub source. We still have a pocket of folks that are waiting to be trained. But we couldn't pull them all out of the schools and train them all at one time. So we're still waiting on the pocket of them to be trained. But reports I'm getting, schools are cleaner. Custodians are very responsive to concerns that are addressed either by administration teachers and/or students. Uh, fewer bus issues as far as buses being allowed to be double routed, triple routed. Just overall, the efficiency has been, uh, very much plus. So we're very pleased with it, very excited. Uh, hopefully we can work in the budget that we can move forward incorporating more districts into this, uh, same type scenario.
Great, that's good news. Thank you.
Uh, locally, the primary, um, expense for services, again, goes to contracted service with a second being utilities. As we've just discussed with performance contracting, the hope is to be able to shift some of that utilities into being able to go back to work in our schools. Looking at supplies, supplies and digital resources. Some of the supplies that are also purchased fall under, um, can fall under digital resources. Um, as teachers are teaching and evolving, some of the resources that they're teaching out of our digital as we're trying to work towards students having Chromebooks in their hands and being able to have some of those digital resources. We've also implemented to, in addition to supplies, schools are also getting an allotment for, it's kind, it's a, considered a textbook slash digital resource and they're able to figure out what's best for their school and what's needed to be able to educate the students in their school. Uh, some schools focus more on textbooks, some focus more on digital resource. And a lot of that also depends on the grade and age span of the students. Uh, the operational supplies, um, that is going to be fuel for our facilities, repair parts, gas, tires. A lot of that's gonna be, uh, transportation type and maintenance type of budgets. Our local supplies, very similar to how our L fund supplies, uh, look. Again, primarily classroom supplies and digital resources with portion of it being operational as well. Transfers, um, this is another category that we end up getting. These, this is the funds that we transfer to the charter schools. Um, of the funds, we had kind of discussed a little bit in the Joint Facilities Task Force. This had, topic had come up and I had pulled up two point two million of the two point five million is going to the charter schools in Alamance County. Uh, the remainder is going to charter schools outside of Alamance County from students that live within Alamance County. So that money follows the student, whether their school is within Alamance County or outside of Alamance County. And same with the schools in Alamance County. If somebody lived in Orange County, Orange County would be issuing, um, the charter school in Alamance County a check.
So what's that rate based on?
The rate's based upon our local.
Where is it? The board?
Budget.
Each one's got a percentage of that total, right?
Yeah, so.
From federal, state and the local?
So we don't allocate from the federal and state. We just allocate the, from the local portion and then we take our ADM plus the ADM from all of the charter schools that we pay out from Alamance County students, whether they're within, whether the school's within Alamance County or in another county. We take the eight, the student count of all of the students and come up with a per people number and then we pay it out in installments, um, increments of one tenth. Similar to how we're funded through the school year and we pay. So it's just the local portion that we're paying out. The state does allocate, um, state and federal dollars to the charter schools. And sometimes state dollars get allocated to us and then move around and vice versa as part of those revisions that we receive. Um, we had brought up local fund, um, capital. Some of the items that we have in here, uh, we, the fire truck for Graham High School would be an example of what we were, we received the funding for specialized programs and the fire academy. Uh, that would be a capital purchase that we paid out of local funds to be able to purchase a fire truck for Graham High School's fire academy. So that's the end, uh, the last portion of our current expense budget. Before we move on to capital, do you have any other questions related to local? All right, so then this is the, did the breakdown of our capital revenue. Uh, the primary, um, the largest source of funding that we have for the capital revenue this year is out, the lottery. Um, second being the county appropriation that you guys provide for us. And then there's a little bit of bond interest and then the interest that we are able to receive out of what we have in our bank accounts. Bond interest allocations, we have a little bit of interest left that we are out, we have allocated to specific projects, um, some of which are in progress.
So I'm having trouble understanding again, kind of similar to, uh, capital outlay as a source of revenue. So when I see that term interest, I think of that as being an expense that we pay, not revenue coming in.
So this is interest that has accumulated from what's in the bank account. So this is because of, the, the funds are invested during the time period between when they're received and when they're spent.
Just like interest income?
Basically.
All right.
Yep.
And I believe the board has, uh, voted at some point to allow those proceeds, the interest, to be reinvested into projects, uh, for the school system.
I remember that.
Uh, this is our capital outlay budget for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, a large part of that is architects. In order for the Graham High School STEM program, we received a very large grant uh, from the Golden Leaf Foundation. There was a matching component to it. So we put, um, some of the capital outlay funding into the matching component uh, that was able to get us that grant to be able to do some of the renovations at Graham High School. Uh, several different, uh, some, some equipments and, uh, we have some, as you notice at the bottom, for repairs as needed. Those are the type of items that we don't necessarily know what's gonna come up. We don't know what boiler might, uh, need repaired. We don't know sometimes until we go to turn them on, what, what issues might come up. So we always keep a little bit, uh, to be able to, in reserve for what might happen that we're not aware of.
Let's, um, dwell just a minute if we can on the roofing, the thirty-five thousand dollars for roofing. Um, actually, I'll hold my question for a moment. Let, let me let you get through your lottery budget slide and then we'll talk about that. Thank you.
No problem. And this, just that had brought to my attention. This is the, um, million dollars that you all allocated. This is the breakdown of that, um, not necessarily a whole capital outlay.
It would be helpful to have totals on these slides or?
Um, so the lottery funding for capital, uh, as you can see, we've, and we've had several meetings over the changes in lottery funds, uh, by year. Our highest being in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, it being just over three million dollars. Last year, we received one point seven million. And we do have unallocated in the lottery account that we have not spent. As of June thirtieth, we have two point five million in there for projects to be able to spend. We have been spending more in lottery projects than we've been receiving. So that's kind of our, quote, fund balance in the lottery, um, would be comparable. Uh, so we, that is decreasing on an annual basis.
Can I ask, ask a question about the, these numbers for each year? This is what came to the county and then we allocated to you as you requested them? Or is these is what was, or what were, what were available to us from the lottery program?
This would be what would be available.
Okay, so it's not what, uh, you requested from us to spend?
No, that's.
And tha, and that's why there's that two and a half million dollar, uh, like fund balance?
Yes, yes.
Good.
Um, and as you guys know, several of the other items in terms of the decrease in lottery funds, it is partially because of it is you being used to fund other initiatives at the state level. At our level, we are, this is what we're spending, um, on capital revenue.
I have a quick question about the lottery funding. Is that allocated to all the school systems equally across the state? Does the, the, whoever's in charge of the lottery at the state level, do they say, okay, everybody gets a certain percentage? Or is it up to the individual school system to request it?
So, so much is allocated to us and then we have to request it. So in order for us to get lottery funds, it's a little bit of a process. We have to have board approval by our board. Um, you all have to approve it and then it goes to DPI. DPI has a pass to approve it, see the plans, um, and then they will allocate it. The following month is when we'll get it. So when we make a request, it can be a few months down the road, which is why when we're trying to do summer projects, we might request summer projects in March to be able to make sure that hopefully by the June, we actually are able to draw down some of those lottery funds.
At some point, I was looking at the comparison between ABSS and surrounding counties and how much lottery money we got. And we got more than a lot of the surrounding counties. And I think that's a reflection on you and your work and the administration that y'all go get that money, you know, go get that lottery money and, and don't sort of sit back. And I think that's really good and I appreciate that.
How many schools do we have? Thirty-nine?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-six?
Including, uh, the, I guess, we have thirty-six including, uh, what would be the middle college that's housed at ACC.
So, um, one point seven million divided by thirty-six isn't very much per school. It's like forty, s, forty-seven thousand maybe that roughly?
It does, it makes it difficult to be able to do large projects. Um, and one of the things we allocate out of capital every year, in addition to it, about four hundred thousand comes out to pay down C-Tech, uh, for the debt service on that. And then we also allocate the summer painting projects that we do every year. Capital outlays, uh, or lottery funds is how we've kind of designated that as a recurring to be able to continue that initiative.
So the point I was trying to make was, and you reinforced it, it's not a panacea for meeting the capital needs of our schools, the lottery program.
Our summer twenty seventeen lottery project, um, the challenging part about some of our lottery projects is they typically cross over years. So we might have a little bit paid out of long fiscal year and a little bit paid out of the next fiscal year. So in some ways, it's easier to look at it on a summer basis. Again, uh, this is, this is the breakdown. A large portion of it went to C-Tech and then painting, uh, being the two largest projects. And then we had some tennis court repairs, track repairs and several other, uh, repairs that were completed over summer twenty seventeen. And some of that, like I said, was spent out of each year's budget.
Okay, let's, um, talk a little bit about the, um, the roof repair and replacement because, uh, so y'all had requested a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the county. And then, so you add up the hu, you got a hundred and twen, took a hundred and twenty-five from your lottery budget and then thirty-five thousand dollars from the county capital outlay budget. So I just wanna, uh, this is a very important question to me. Do y'all have enough money in ABSS to keep up with the roof situation? No?
Roofs?
A loaded question.
Yes, it is a very loaded question. And Mr. Lash, I definitely knows about roofs.
Yeah.
Roof scheduled to replace roofs in the system is sort of, sort of fallen by the wayside to a lot of ways we've done what we've had to do. And what we really got to get started is a true roof replacement system. Uh, we've had conversation about the roofs that we have failing that our attorneys are involved in. Uh, so, you know, that's, I see it for about a million dollars for that project along to fix those roofs and repair those roofs. Not going out to be, this is a squadron engineer that's put out there. What I expect from you to see in the next capital outlay request and, uh, in the future in our task force meetings, this course is talking more about how we want to tackle this elephant, this environment. Because it is a huge elephant, it is a huge expense. At one of our high schools that's got the Florida style buildings, it's about forty thousand dollars replaced, just one of those buildings. Uh, you take a self-contained school such as Broadview, you're topping five and one and a half to two million dollars just to replace that roof. So what we take to learn roof and money now is to take our roof and money and make the roof last as long as we possibly can. There's different coatings now being put on constantly for coating roofs. And now immediately we are going to have to do that major repair. Does that answer your question?
It does. Um, also, what's going on with your lawsuit against your roofer? Cause y'all, as I understand from the newspaper, hired some roofers and it didn't work out so well. And then there's, uh, complications that continue to unfold?
That's the six roofs that I was addressing there. Uh, there was a warranty issued on the roofs. The company issued warranties in the Martin business and the company bottom house. So it's just this little chain of things. Uh, Dr. Harrison and I have had a conversation with our attorneys last week. This process is moving forward. And that's where that round four million dollars come from, certainly his years that's worked on some of that workforce. So once we can get that to a point that we know how much money, uh, we're gonna be awarded from the warranties, I promise you, we'll be back into another conversation to say, there's a gap. You know, Commissioner, how do you want us to make up this gap? How, where we will make it up after this school year or the summer to complete those prices?
Well, I expect that y'all are talking with your attorneys too about addressing the damages from the faulty roofs. It's not only the roof itself that leaked and the fixing that, but it's also the flooring that had to be replaced, the ceiling tiles and all the other things.
We're counting ceiling tiles, counting flooring, counting everything. All that will be put into the major claim. And then, you know, you know as well as I do, it's kind of left up to what the warranty says and what the claim will be at the end. Uh, the warranty says, which in my opinion says recovered. Both attorneys agree it recovered, it's just to what extent because we are on the backside of fixing the warranty.
What about mold? I noticed that you don't have anything budgeted for mold. And, uh, social media chatter says that mold is a problem. I'm sure you've gotten calls about that. What was your response to questions about mold in the school system?
Okay, if someone calls and says they receive the possibility of mold, you know, or anything that would resemble it, uh, I do have a general staff or safety officer that can go out and he checks and he looks. If it's something that we need to call in and come in and remediate, we will do that. And fortunately, the custodial cleaners that we use now are certified to remove mold. So we can use them to come in on weekends or weekends to take care of any of that situation. Uh, a lot of times we find out it's what it appears to be and what it may be, it's two different things. But either way, we do get it cleaned up. We spend a little extra time and, and we do it without the presence of students. So that type of work takes place in the afternoon or on weekends.
You don't have a line item, uh, of, an account to put roof, money in for roof repairs. It's just a per job as it comes along.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Yeah. You know, I don't know how you start it, but someday, you know, there's always a starting point for everything. And I know back when Susan was down at Duke all the time, I, I would just walk around and talk to people about various functions. They told me, they said, the guy that, you know, they have a lot of flat roofs down there. He told me, he said, if you put, I forgot what he said, X amount of dollars in a fund, in a budget, every year, based on square footage of your system, that you'll never have a major roof repair. Yeah, that's, that sounds good. It sounds nice. I don't know where you start and I don't know what fun.
That's probably true, Tim.
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah.
Well, and I think that maybe that's, you know, I'm glad you brought it up because really that's a part of what we're talking about, starting with the roof replacement plan.
Right.
And, you know, Brian, Susan, we probably need to sit down and talk about, one, you know, what, what would that number look like? And two, who's going to house that money? Who's going to house that money? Is it something that the county wants to put as a line item that we know we're going to pull from? Or is it something that the county wants to put in the line item or give to us that we're going to put in the line item for roofs? But I think if Brian's okay with that, we can get together.
I think this falls right in line with what I've, I've talked with a couple of commissioners about, about us doing some financial planning for our capital needs because we have, we're responsible for their roofs, our own roofs, courts roofs, ACC's roofs. We have a lot of roof needs that we're, that's totally responsible for. I think we're reaching a point where as a county government, we need to work with folks like Todd and Shannon to plan how best to do this, what money needs to cover these and how do you set something up annually to avoid big, major problems. So I'm sure in the next couple of weeks, we'll be talking with you guys about how we'll, how we'll do that and I'll be bringing something to the board.
You can have more problems inside a building from leakage through that roof than any of that.
Sure.
If you can keep those roofs secure and waterproof, you're saving money in the long run.
It's a guaranteed issue. I mean, it's, it's coming.
It's coming, that's right.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's good. Is it feasible to get the square footage of our buildings, broken down county schools and so forth as far as the roof?
Roof square footage for schools, ACC, courts, and county buildings. Those are our, our responsibilities as county government. We can do it.
I know that the county manager's been working on a facilities maintenance plan for the county. Does the school system have its own facilities maintenance plan that's up and running and ongoing?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
We have, we have a maintenance plan, but especially dealing with HVC, your heating and cooling as far as rollers, chowlers, that's where you make your expenses. We also have a plan with roofs, we're on the roofs at least over six months, cleaning them with debris. So we have a plan that we're taking care of as much as you can see as fast as you can see.
I might remind us that of the six strategies in your strategic plan, one is facilities. I mean, that's very important.
All right, here are some pictures of some of the completed 2017 projects with some carpet removal and painting. I know you guys have all been in our schools and seen the difference of what some of these, while just painting might just be paint, it makes a huge difference in the school. Same with the carpet removal into the tile replacement with allergies and esthetics. We did have some roof repairs and replacements. The Graham High School Science Lab, we had some onings. We also had some track repairs and tennis wave repairs that had become real safety issues for the students. Some of our projects that we've already started getting in the works for 2018 as projects are painting several of the schools. The last school, as you'll notice, that's one more, we're trying to determine between two schools based upon some other information work that might be done, that we're waiting to decide which of the last schools will be done, but one additional school. There will also be windows at Tarrantine, some work done at Western Middle, Garrett Hoffeld's roofs and a relocation of the pump and tank for the well from Western High School to Sylvan to be able to use some of the equipment that we have without having to purchase any new to make repairs. If there's any other questions?
I appreciate the report, I really do. I've always thought that educating our kids is a team sport and it's important that the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners are on the same team even though we have different roles to play. And, and of course, we have to hold each other accountable, but we all have to work together to make sure that our kids get the best education.
Absolutely. And Brian, Susan, Susan have been very helpful in working through the process and helping with this as well. Does anybody else have any questions or anything?
Madam Chair, can I just make one quick, one clarity? You asked earlier about the legal expenses and I just wanted to clarify that we are a member of the North Carolina School Board Association and consequently a member of the School Board Trust. So when we have a lawsuit, we submit that case to them and if they approve it, which they typically do, then they pay all of our legal defense. So I just didn't want you to think that we were using local funds to pay legal defense fees.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
That's with respect to the roof issue, Tony?
Um, I don't think that's actually a legal, uh, case yet.
Yeah.
You know, and I would add, Dr. Harrison's done some great work with having internal staff prepare, for example, contracts. He has a template that they use so that when we submit contracts to legal staff, they, they don't have to review the whole thing, but they can review the parts that they need to see. So there is some internal efforts being done to reduce legal fees. Unfortunately, you can't control sometimes the iteration in which the legal necessities come at you. But, but I mainly just didn't want you to think that we, that our legal defense was being paid by local funds, so that that's been some area of confusion in the past, so...
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. That was very good presentation, very thorough. We put you through your phases and you did a good job. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could say, we, we appreciate Shannon and Dr. Harrison and Todd spending so much time putting this together for the board and being very open. They have really given you a lot of information. It is a very complicated budget. They've been very open with us and we certainly appreciate that and look forward to working with them on how to plan for the future as partners with them. So, thank you, thank you, Dr. Harrison.
Absolutely, and that's definitely what we're looking for is a partnership with the school system and recognition of how important it is to all of us to have a successful public school system. Okay, annual audit presentation by Mr. Lee of Martin Starnes and Associates.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you for having me here today. My name's Brian Lee. I'm the CPA and manager with Martin Starnes and Associates. And I'd just like to start off by saying thank you for allowing us to perform your audit again this year. It's a relationship that we don't take for granted and look forward to many years in the future. Thank you. Some of the highlights from the audit, we issued an unmodified opinion in the opinion letter in the front of your financial statements. That is a clean opinion, that's the one you're after. This is thanks to your staff, Susan, Andrea, everyone else in finance, everyone at DSS, Kelly's team, they were really great to work with and we were on a tight timeline this year to get your report into the LGC for debt issuances. And so everyone really pulled together and, and made the audit as painless as an audit can be. This is the general fund summary of revenues and expenditures over the past two years. See that revenues have increased from 144.7 million to 145.8. It's just under a 1% increase. Expenses have increased from 137 million to just over 144, so that's about a 5% increase. Still a positive impact on net position and fund balance in the general fund. So here's the total fund balance for general fund. You can see that it increased by about 1.7 million dollars this year, up to just over 48 million. And over the past two years, fund balances increased by 10 million dollars. Available fund balance is a metric that the LGC looks at across the state for all counties and municipalities. You begin with your total fund balance in the general fund at just over 48 million. We subtract non-spendable items, so that would be inventory or long-term receivables, in which case you don't have any. We also subtract stabilization by state statute of just over 11 million. This is another calculation in and of itself and that leaves us with available fund balance of just under 37 million. And this is an increase of about 1.2 million from last year. So continuing on with the available fund balance calculation, the LGC says that about 8% of your expenditures in the prior year equates to about a month of expenditures. And so we had about 25.5% of available fund balance of your 2017 expenditures and transfers out of the general fund. So once again, about three months. If you were to lose all of your funding for some reason, the county could carry on exactly as it did this year for just over three months. Unassigned fund balance in the general fund of just over 26 million. So this is reducing, this is taking out all of your committed, assigned, and restricted fund balance. Total general fund expenditures for the year of over 144 million. Yes, sir?
On that, the amount of fund balance taken out that's committed, would that include what's committed in our, the current year's budget?
If you, if you appropriate from fund balance into your current year budget, then that does include that. If you encumber anything in your next year's budget, then that's what it's taking.
I'm talking about the...
I think what he's talking about is, are you talking about for 17, 18, what we've, what we've budgeted of fund balance?
Right.
That, that, I don't...
To balance the budget.
To balance this current year's budget, is it included?
Yes, that is a restricted fund balance item.
So, so if we, if, if actuality happened in 27, 2018, as we budgeted, our fund balance would go down to 18.26%.
That's where it said at the end of June 30th of 17.
Yes, so we used approximately 7 million dollars in fund balance to balance 17, 18's current, current budget. So if, if all that happened and we went down to 18.26%, we would actually be lower than that if we spent all our fund balance that we budgeted this year too.
Yes. And so you can see that unassigned as a percentage of general fund expenditures in 17 has dropped to 18.2%. But one big factor in that is the increase in expenditures that we showed, it's about 5% increase and 4% decrease in unassigned. The top three revenues in the general fund for the year, ad valorem taxes at 53%, that's property taxes on real and personal property, local option sales taxes at 19% that come from the state, restricted intergovernmental at 17%. These are franchise, utility taxes, and other revenues make up about 11%. And some of those other revenues are other taxes and licenses, unrestricted intergovernmental funds, permits and fees, sales and services, investment earnings, and other miscellaneous revenues. So ad valorem taxes are the largest portion of your revenues. You see that it increased about a million dollars from last year. Local option sales taxes are the second largest group and it increased from 27.6 million to 28.1. And this is a good indicator of the economic activity in your region that's flowing down from the state. Restricted intergovernmental revenues dropped from 26 million to about 24.6. This includes federal and state funding in the form of grants. Your top three expenditures in the general fund, education at 29%, human services at 25%, public safety at 23, and all other expenses make up about 23%. So your total, your top three expenses in the general fund add up to 111 million.
So on the education, that's including our support to ABSS and to Almas Community College?
Yes, it is.
But not debt service?
Not debt service.
That's right. If you add debt service, I think we're close to 33% of our entire budget.
So some other expenses in the general fund that fall into that other category are general government, transportation, culture and rec, economic and fiscal development, and your debt service.
And, and public safety, is that all sheriff and detention center?
I think that also includes emergency services.
Emergency services, EMS, as well as CCOM.
So education expenditures have increased from 39.8 million up to just under 42 million. And that's mostly due to capital outlay and project expenditures. Human services is right on par with last year at about 35.7 million. Not much change there for the two, last two years. Public safety expenditures have increased from just over 30 million to 33.5 million and this is also a reflection of capital outlay and major purchases in that department. And the last fund I have here is the landfill fund. Operating income in 2016 of just under 450,000 and that is up to over 500,000 this year. Investment in capital assets increased about 700,000, which, which plays a role in unrestricted net position, so unrestricted net position did come down a little bit by about 200,000, but total net position did still increase by about 500,000. And there's, there's two points I'd like to, to discuss with you about the upcoming year. There's a slight change in the way that direct benefit payments are going to be presented. They're not going to flow through your report anymore. So in the very back of your report is the schedule of expenditures of federal and state awards. It's in the compliance section and that shows direct benefits that come from the state through to your citizens and don't necessarily pass through county funds. These are going to be taken off that schedule. So what that does is, is really reduce the amount of federal, federal and state funding that it looks like you're receiving. So that changes the way that we do our single audit and how many programs we have to test. So, and we can't really predict what next year's going to look like at this point, but if we were under these rules for this year, we tested five programs. If we had been under this new set of standards, we would test nine. So it is going to change the audit process a little bit. And so you might also see some additional engagements coming down from the state of how to test Medicaid specifically and some of the other DSS programs. So just be on the lookout for that. But one thing I can tell you is we're all over that. We're talking to the state auditor. We've already had discussions with Susan about getting set up for that and making sure that the county's ready for an audit of some programs that maybe haven't been tested in the past. The second point is the change in OPEB, other post-employment benefits. In the past, that liability has been determined by an actuary, discounted back, and amortized over 30 years. So every year, we pick up one year of your OPEB liability. Next year, the entire liability comes onto the books across the state. So it's going to be a very, very large number that affects only your balance sheet. You won't have to do anything with budgeting, but your, your balance sheet in the front two schedules, exhibits A and B, will drastically change. You'll have a much bigger liability on the books for OPEB. So it's just something to be aware of.
Would you go back a slide?
Sure.
The, yeah, the enterprise fund. Brian, can you explain, I should, I'm not going to lie to you, but the total net position, 22 million? Explain to us what that is.
That's your, that's your retained earnings.
Retained earnings.
I'll be glad to, Commissioner, sir. What that number entails is it's all of the capital equipment that the landfill possesses, so the building, the land. It's not just money sitting in a bank account for them. What we have to do is set aside money for the event that the landfill were to close and we would have to maintain. The assets would then be sold as far as the equipment and those funds would be put aside to keep maintaining that landfill closure for about 20 years.
Yeah, and one of the largest expenses in the fund, in your fund statements, is for landfill closure and post-closure costs. So those costs are being accumulated right now before it's actually closed. And then your portion, your 22 million that you have right now, kind of locked up in capital assets is at 13.7 million. So I welcome any other questions that you have.
Any questions? Pretty good? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee, very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so budgeting and the four, the school's capital reserve fund.
Good morning, Danielle, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before you is a transfer request to move 1,549,518 from the general fund to the school's capital reserve fund. What this is coming from is in fiscal year 16, I'm sorry, yes, 1617. These are the revenues and access of their debt service from Articles 40 and 42 and we just need to go ahead and transfer those funds to a capital reserve fund that will be used at a later date for debt service or additional renovation projects.
So move. Second.
Great. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
These are funds that when we're talking with ABSS about how to start long-range planning for their capital issues that they have like the roofs, we'll be talking about these funds as well as lottery, as well as our annual allocation that we give them every year. So this will be a part of that conversation too.
Super. Okay, county manager's report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items to talk with you about. The first one, as Mr. Byrd mentioned, this does re-
The first one, as Commissioner Byrd mentioned, this does require your, some action from the board. So as a board, the commissioners are being asked to appoint one commissioner to serve on the nominating committee for Cardinal Innovations. As you have, I'm sure, seen in the press and seen releases from Association of County Commissioners, the state has assumed operations of Cardinal Innovations and disbanded the board that had been in place. So the state is asking that each county in the 20-county catchment area appoint one commissioner that will serve on a nominating committee that will be involved with selecting who the new board for Cardinal will be. So today, we have to do this by Friday, December the 8th, and we'd like to see if the board would be willing today to, via a motion, appoint someone to be on this nominating committee. The nominating committee will meet the week of December 11th. The state is moving very quickly. County Attorney Albright has reviewed a lot of information from the association as well as from Secretary Cohen about this process. I'm sure he can attest, they're moving very fast. And so if it's possible today to have the board appoint someone to serve on this nominating committee, then we will take care of making sure the public knows how to nominate folks. We'll put that on our website and get it out there because there is an email address that people can submit names to nominate. So this time, if it's any questions that County Attorney or myself can answer, ideally we'd like to ask that you, through motion, appoint a member to the nominating committee.
In those nominations, they're going to go directly to either the association or to the secretary, secretary's office, I believe, right? So they're not, they're not coming to us just because they're from Alamanz County.
That's correct. It's, it looks like it's through the association.
And the board has specific makeup, so, I mean, it requires one county commissioner, somebody with a background in mental health, someone with a background in insurance, and so on.
Well, that was, that was the old board. I'm not sure what.
No, no, that's statutorily required.
But the, as far as the nominating committee goes.
No, the nominating committee needs to be one, 20 commissioners, one from each county.
That's correct.
Right.
And then if you can self-nominate, you can send your, your resignation to the website.
I'd be happy to serve on the nominating committee, but I might suggest that we appoint an alternate, an alternate, because, I mean, there's a lot of things on my calendar next week. We don't know when that nominating committee is going to go.
Yeah, that's true.
And that might be true for everybody.
If, if the board chooses to do that, appoint a member as the official member of the nominating committee and an alternate. We'll let the Association of County Commissioners know, and I'm sure that'll be fine because they're, they're moving very quickly and they really want a representative from each board of commissioners in their area.
How about Amy? Do you want to be the alternate or the nominee?
Well, I think that Bob is better qualified to be the nominee with all of his experience in the healthcare field, but if needed to be, I would be glad to be an alternate.
Is there a consensus from the board that sounds like Bob is the official nominee? I'm just giving you Commissioner Byrd and Commissioner Galey, Chairman Galey will be the alternate, okay.
Broke that camera.
And, thank you. And the other item I have is, I know we've had a lot of inquiries into county facilities of late, in particular, Peak Property over, off of Woody Drive and the Cronotl property over in East Burlington. And what, we've had, we've had lots of folks asking about acquiring both of them, and I've talked with a number of the commissioners about this, and what I'd like to do, our, the county manager's office has a performance management goal for this fiscal year to bring a process for facility planning to the board of commissioners. And I would like to do that at the December 18th Commissioners Meeting. I'll come and outline a process. I won't have a plan on the 18th. I won't have an official plan for what we should do, but I'll have a, some things, I'll make some recommendations to you that, steps we need to take to come up with that plan. And this, these, a formalized plan, I think, will help us make thoughtful decisions on accepting properties. So the next time someone comes to the county and says, "I have a, a property I want to donate to the county," I think we need to have something in place that helps guide us deciding, should we take it or should we not, as well as disposing properties. We have a number of properties that we're not using efficiently and we may want to get rid of. And I know the board has already taken bids on the Cronotl property, but you've tabled that for 30 days. And what I'd like to ask that, and I'll talk about this more on the 18th, what I'd like to ask that you do is you give us some time to plan and come up with what's the highest and best use of all of our properties, including the ones that people are actively interested in right now, and then we can decide what's best to do. So, you know, I don't need you to take any action at this point. I just want to let you know, I'm coming on the 18th with some proposals about what we need to do next, and as we get continued calls from folks either wanting to buy our properties, if it's okay with the board and there's a consensus, we will tell them, we're formulating a plan, and we will have some guidance for the commissioners on how to make these decisions. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, but if this sounds reasonable, I'd just ask that we wait to take any formal action on disposing of or accepting properties until we get something in place. And I don't think it's going to be a planned process that takes forever for us to do, but there is some time involved.
Well, I support planning, and I think this is a long time coming that we need to do.
Yeah, a lot of times, we, in the past, we have turned down property that was going to cost the county some of its money to take. That place in Meven, I can't remember what that they offered to give it to us, and a chick at the time turned it down. Do you remember that, that situation, what it was? I remember the, the, that particular turn-down item, but I don't remember the details about it. Why we didn't take it.
Well, I think if you, if you have, if you know where you're trying to go with your facilities, you know if it's, if it's wise to take the offer?
Yeah.
Or to say, no, that really, that's going to be worse for us than if we didn't take it. So that's where I'd like for us to be. That's right. I'd like for us to be in a place where we know where we're going with our buildings. And frankly, it will include in the end where ABSS is going, where ACC is going, where the courts are going, because we are financially responsible for all of that, but I think we can, we can work together with them to do it.
Was that 3C that you're talking about? I think it was.
Oh, yeah.
The battery?
Yeah.
Where they didn't move in or didn't work out?
Yeah.
I vaguely remember.
I saw how that came to my mind.
Do we need to take action on the motion that we passed last time about the 30-day tabling of?
That goes to the 18th, or I think.
Is that still within 30 days?
We're, I believe we'd still be.
You still, you still can make the decision that you could have made in our last meeting, to accept it, reject it, or postpone it.
Well, we, well, we made a motion to table it for 30 days, and I just want to make sure that we're not in violation of what we passed, is it?
And we can bring it back up then, I guess. Whatever that decision is, will be made on the 18th.
I won't have, I want to make sure that I'm clear with the board. I won't have an answer for what I think is the best thing to do with Cronotl or Peak on the 18th. In fact, I'll probably ask you to wait longer to do anything with either property, but what I will have is the process that I want us to go through to figure it out. So, and, you know, I think it would be, I think that's the best course of action to let us get some, some concrete things in place.
Sounds good. Thank you. Do we have any commissioners' comments?
Well, first off, I would like to say thanks to the board for giving me the opportunity to serve as your chairman. It's been a pleasure. I think we've done some really good things in the county, and I want to congratulate Amy, and I know she's going to do a good job.
Yeah, I will try. Thank you.
The truth is, you'll live longer, and your wife ought to thank us. She already is.
Well, I would like to congratulate Amy as well. I think she'll do an excellent job, and appreciate the background that she brings to that, your position.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to report on a couple of things. Last week, I attended a joint meeting of three steering committees at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I chaired one of those meetings. We met separately. The three steering committees were the Public Education Steering Committee, the General Government Steering Committee, and the one that I chaired, the Helping Human Services Steering Committee. We met separately for an hour, and then we met for the rest of the day, it was almost all day, as the three committees together. And we heard a variety of speakers, very interesting speakers, on public education, on early childhood education, and how important it is to invest resources into pre-K education and the return that you can get on that. Secretary Mandy Cohen spoke to the group about the, the whole Cardinal situation and what she was planning to do that we just heard about, and there are other speakers, too. But one I wanted to point out was our Family Justice Center, under Cindy Brady and the Family Justice Center in Greensboro did an hour presentation. What's that director's name, Susan? It's, I can't think of her name. But Cindy and, and the director from Greensboro did an outstanding job at presenting the benefits of having family justice centers take care, to treat or counsel and, and deal with the issues of victims of domestic violence and, and sexual assault and non-fatal strangulations and those sorts of things. And because a lot, there aren't that many family justice centers, and, and so we're models for the state, and we have people coming from all over looking at our family justice centers. And it made me very proud to be in the room while they were presenting. And then I got to experience one of our elementary schools last week. I was invited to read to a group of students at Yoder Elementary in Meven, and we have some tremendous things going on in our schools. I got to witness some excellent teaching, teaching there. These were second graders. It just makes me feel so hopeful for our future, seeing what's going on.
Awesome. Anyone else? Okay, well then, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for watching the Alamanz County Commissioners' Meeting. Meetings of the Commissioners' Board occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners' Chambers at the County Office Building at 124 West Elm Street in Graham. Typically, the first meeting of the month is at 9:00 a.m., and the second meeting of the month is at 7:00 p.m. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the county website at www.alamanz-nc.com. The video of this meeting is broadcast on Time Warner's Public Access Channel on the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 10:00 p.m. You can also access this meeting through our website at www.alamanz-nc.com. Please visit our website for more information about watching meetings online. For technical questions regarding this meeting's online or television broadcast, please contact our county webmaster at webmaster@alamanz-nc.com. Please note that this address is for technical questions only. Questions regarding the content of Commissioners' meetings may be made to the Commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information at the county website at www.alamanz-nc.com. Click on the link that says "County Commissioners" to learn more about our Commissioners, read minutes of past meetings, access agendas, and find other information about the County Commissioners. You can send mail correspondence to the Commissioners by sending it to the Alamanz County Commissioners, 124 West Elm Street, Graham, North Carolina 27253. Again, thank you for tuning in to the Alamanz County Commissioners' Meeting.